Thank you for joining us today at the May 4, 2017 business meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, Don Crapp.
Well, good morning, commissioners. It is a beautiful spring day. I understand the weather's going to return back to rainy weather for the upcoming weekend. So I guess we should enjoy today as much as we can. We are joined this morning from county council, Mr. Steven Madcor. He'll be up at the dais in a moment. And of course, Mary Rathke, our clerk to the board. I'll go ahead and conduct the roll. Commissioner Humberson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, the first items on the agenda are a couple presentations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The first presentation is a proclamation that would proclaim the week of May 7, 2017, as Clean and Plentiful Drinking Water Week in Clackamas County. I'm going to invite our Director of Water Environment Services, Greg Keist, up to the dais, and then he will introduce two others to speak to you this morning.
Morning, Chair Bernard, commissioners. We're here to talk about my favorite subject, clean water, today. And I'm going to be joined by Joel Ferguson with Health and Human Services and Kim Swan from the Clackamas River Water Providers. For over the past 35 years, the American Water Works Association has designated Drinking Water Week, and it's a way for water professionals in communities they serve to celebrate clean and cold and clear drinking water. At their April meeting, the Clackamas River Water Providers requested that the county commissioners adopt a resolution declaring a Clean Drinking Water Week, Clean and Safe Drinking Water Week, for Clackamas County for the week of May 7 through the 13th. And so that's what we're here to talk about today. We're not, the county, Wes, is not a drinking water provider, but we do provide important support for drinking water. I don't know if people know this, but three communities, Estacada, Sandy, and Boring, all discharge treated wastewater to the Clackamas River upstream of the drinking water intakes. So us doing our job in the wastewater field is critically important to good drinking water as well. Also, Wes provides surface water services. So we treat stormwater, particularly in the Clackamas industrial area, that also discharges to the Clackamas River before the drinking water intakes. So it's very much a team effort when it comes to clean drinking water. I will, oh, one thing I wanted to call attention to, this year, beginning in the summer, we're going to be doing a project on Carley Creek. And it's a treatment wetland that will control runoff from over 400 acres in the Clackamas industrial area. So that runoff that now just gets directly piped to Carley Creek will go through a treatment wetland and then be discharged to Carley Creek, which then discharges to the Clackamas River. So we, again, want to contribute what we can towards clean drinking water. And with that, I will hand it off to Joel Ferguson from Health and Human Services.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. I'm from Health, Housing, and Human Services, Public Health Program, and we provide access to safe drinking water, which is essential to human health. Each person requires at least 20 to 50 liters of clean and safe water a day for drinking, cooking, and simply keeping themselves clean. Oregon Drinking Water Services contracts with Clackamas County Public Health, Environmental Health, to operate the program. The program administers and enforces drinking water quality standards for public water systems in Clackamas County that use groundwater and serves a population of 3,300 or less. Clackamas County has about 320 of these public water systems that meet this criteria, which is the most of any county in Oregon. A waters, an onsite water system survey is conducted of these systems once every three to five years. And most of them are in the rural county areas, so. Clackamas County Public Health Drinking Water Program is a resource for public water system operators and the public when dealing with water quality alerts, public notices, water monitoring and testing, and sanitary hazard analysis.
Great, thank you.
All right. Hello. My name is Kim Swan. I'm the Water Resource Manager for the Clackamas River Water Providers. The Clackamas River Water Providers is a coalition of nine cities and water districts that gather drinking water out of the Clackamas River. Combined, we serve drinking water to almost 300,000 people here in Clackamas County. We implement two programs, a水源 protection program and a public outreach and education program with the purpose and intent of preserving and conserving the Clackamas River as a high-quality drinking water source and to enable us to keep future drinking water treatment costs low. The Clackamas River Water Provider and its members work hard to protect our drinking water source from its source all the way to your taps so that we can provide our citizens with high-quality drinking water that's convenient, to protect public health, to provide fire flows, and to support economic growth for our communities. So I would like you, to thank you today for recognizing National Drinking Water Week and the importance that public drinking water provides to our communities.
Great, thank you very much. Is somebody going to read the proclamation?
I will read the proclamation.
All right.
Proclaiming May 7 to the 13th, 2017, as Clean and Plentiful Drinking Water Week in Clackamas County. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and we are fortunate to have high-quality sources in Clackamas County, most notably the Clackamas River, and whereas our public water systems deliver amazingly reliable water service to over 300,000 customers in Clackamas County every day, and whereas for less than a penny per gallon, public water system customers get in-home delivery of a product that is essential for life and health, and whereas public water supplies increase public safety by feeding fire sprinkler systems and fire hydrants, and whereas public water system customers are the beneficiaries of the investments previous generations have made in the infrastructure that delivers all of the, for said benefits and more, and whereas Clackamas County has a strategic priority to honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources, and whereas Clackamas County departments provide critical services that protect both public and private drinking water supplies through wastewater and stormwater utility management, watershed management, hazardous materials and solid waste disposal, spill prevention and response, septic and onsite wastewater programs, and private well testing. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that Clackamas County Board of Commissioners declares May 7 to the 13th, 2017, as Clean and Plentiful Drinking Water Week in Clackamas County. We encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating our valuable natural resource of clean and plentiful drinking water in Clackamas County, dated this 4th May, 4th day of May, 2017.
Great, thank you very much. Entertain a motion?
I move we proclaim the week of May 7, 2017, as Clean and Plentiful Drinking Water Week in Clackamas County. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, proclaim the week of May 7, 2017, as Clean and Plentiful Drinking Water Week for Clackamas County. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just have, just a question. Great to have this before us today, and, you know, my background, even Commissioner Humberson's background in water, but I go back into about the year 1998, I think, when I sat on my first water-related budget committee and learned more about this. So my question, as a county commissioner, Wes, DHS, and everyone, how much interaction is there between Wes and these private, these private wells, or for these private systems, these small systems that you, you, how much, is there any interaction?
Yes, and I'll let Joel speak to that. Public health, yeah. We, I am out at water systems every three to five years, and then also I'm in, I'm in contact with water operators all the time. So I'm out onsite every three to five years at a minimum, and then if there's follow-up work from a water system survey that, so I could be out there, you know, within a month or two after the survey. So I'm, I'm working directly with mostly operators of the water system, but I also talk to residents who are on that water system if they have concerns or anything like that.
I guess what I was specifically driving at is that your, your, our interaction between the water purveyors, the districts, for example, or the Clackamas River Water Providers, is there any interaction between DHS and your capacity or your department with that regard? Is there, because I just wasn't aware of it in my previous roles, that we, that there were so many, as you stated in your presentation, there were so many of these systems out there.
Some of the small water systems I work with are privately owned, you know, a mobile home park or a restaurant, you know, that serves the public. So that's how I would be working directly with the owner of that water system, or there's a number of small water districts up toward Mount Hood that, you know, that serves 80, 90 homes. And so it has, they have their own little board for the water system, and then I can work with, you know, if all the board members show up, and then their certified operator shows up, then I'll work with, directly with them.
Okay, great. That's all I, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a presentation for mental health awareness in Clackamas County.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to invite Mary Rumbaw, who is our Director of Behavioral Health, with our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department, up to the table to address you on this presentation.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Chair Bernard, commissioners. My name is Mary Rumbaw, and I'm the Director of Clackamas Behavioral Health Division, and we are here today to highlight May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And today, we're actually going to present on the role of peers in mental health. In addition, last year, the board did formally recognize that annually, Clackamas Behavioral Health Division would do a Superheart Hero Award honoring folks in our community who are moving forward, the intent of successful mental health services in our community. So we will be doing that at the end. I would like to introduce Ally Linfoot, who is our peer coordinator, and she'll be doing the presentation today.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and commissioners. My name is Ally Linfoot. I am the Peer Services Coordinator for the Behavioral Health Division within Health, Housing, and Human Services. First of all, I think it's important to define, define what peer support is. So peer services are offered to people within Clackamas County that are struggling with mental health or addiction. The people providing the support have lived experience of one or both conditions, and we, has been shown to be a really effective addition to traditional treatment methods. Make sure I hit the right arrow. So a peer support specialist provides assistance, support, and encouragement to those that are working towards recovery. Some of those common activities that a peer support specialist might work with an individual on is advocacy, helping to also help the person learn self-advocacy, what we call experiential sharing, which is really just sharing our lived experience stories, building community, mentoring and coaching, connecting to resources, socializing and self-esteem building, and systems navigation. Peer support specialists also have an additional responsibility of working as change agents within either the providers that they work for or within systems where they work to help facilitate cultural change. These, this type of support work is, we say it's fairly new. It's been around for a long, long time, just hasn't necessarily been recognized. So that is another one of the, the system change things that they work on. Requirements to do this kind of work, there is training involved. Our Traditional Health Worker Commission, which is a state commission, makes sure that we have a curriculum available for that. Peers are required to have 40 hours of training. If you're a, what we call a peer wellness specialist, which is a peer who not only works with people with mental health or addiction struggles, but also addresses physical, chronic physical illness, receive an additional 40 hours training to address those physical conditions. Currently in the state, we have about 1,189 peer support specialists registered. We have 95 of those working in Clackamas County. We have 45 peer wellness specialists registered in the state. They're a much lower number, but they're also a very specialized type of peer support. Let's see, sorry, I got behind. So the history of our program here in Clackamas, this all started in 2009 with the Behavioral Health redesign. What came out of that redesign was my position, and it actually was, was quite innovative at the time, and it was really recognizing that peer supports are critical components to sustain recovery for people with mental health conditions and addictions. The Peer Services Coordinator, my position, really was hired to take a look at our system of care and develop a peer support system of care that works in cooperation with our treatment systems and many of other systems, such as corrections, law enforcement, child welfare, all those other ancillary systems that families and individuals tend to touch when they're struggling with these difficulties. We wrote an RFP to create a comprehensive array of services, and then chose contractors based on that RFP to provide these services. So the development of this was not only just me sitting at my desk deciding what Clackamas needed, but it was pulling a steering committee together of people, peers, peers working in the community, representatives from peer and organizations. We had about 18 people. Four of us were county staff, the rest were youth or young adults, family members, and adult peers. They identified really the values that should drive this system, strategies for implementation. We developed supporting documents like the logic model, elements of what is peer support services, and what roles are we really needing in our community here, and then measures and outcomes. There we go. And the result of that was 16 programs, some for adults, some for transition age youth, some for families who have children involved in systems, and then another category that are those that are, that really are serving all, and I'll explain those a little bit. So for adults, we have peers that are housed, or not housed, but stationed in our supportive housing locations, like out at Villa Bar and a couple of others. We have peers in our county clinic. We have peers at Centerstone in our, working with Crisis and Safety Net Services. We have peers that go into our jail. We have a brand-new set of peers, again, start working closely with our Sheriff's Department and the Behavioral Health Unit. We have peers in our mental health, drug courts, and family courts. We have an adult drop-in center that runs in Oregon City, and we have two youth drop-in centers, one specifically for LGBTQ youth and one in Milwaukee that, that serves all youth. We have support groups, and our various providers are Mental Health Association of Oregon, Cascadia Peer Wellness, Folk Time, Stay Clean, Dual Diagnosis. They work with adults. For our transition age youth, we have Youth Move, who runs our drop-in center in Milwaukee. Coincidentally, they're right across the street, Chair Bernard, from your auto shop. They provide one-on-one peer support and navigation. And then I mentioned, our LGBTQ youth can get support from the living room. Our families, we have family partners that work in our Behavioral Health Division downstairs. They are partnered with our family facilitators to work with families receiving wraparound services or the wraparound process. Youth Partners, that's something we've been working on. We have an RFP that's going out to provide support to youth that's been in the works for about a year. And then we have community education and support groups for families. We have peers that I mentioned before work within child welfare, both peers that work with families from the children's side, with children who are in foster care or in mental health services, and adult peers who work with parents who are struggling with their own mental health or addiction issues. And then serving all, what that means is providing community education and support groups to family members, such as NAMI, the David Rompre Warmline Peer Staff. We were providing resources to fund that up until, I think, two years ago in the state, then decided they would do that, but we still wanted to contribute. So they work out of our Centerstone location on 82nd. They have a desk there to field calls. And we have Folk Time, who provides peers within Centerstone, and actually other places too. So here's some of the data. This is comparative data. So the green bar is 2015, the, the blue bar is 2016. So last year, we served slightly less. We served about 4,695 than what we did in 2015, but we had some changes in some programs, change in contractor, so we were sort of restarting some of these things. I expected a bit of a drop. For our drop-in centers, they're serving around, excuse me, 1,000 people. Support groups, we have about 4,000 people that are, that are utilizing those supports. The outreach activities in, to system and community partners, that's part of the contract with our contractors. Their, their requirement is to do outreach activities to those systems that, that people are referred from, such as our jail, child welfare, schools, et cetera. And then part also is that we want peers to continually receive training to further their skills in providing this kind of support. And there was 378 staff and training activities that peers took place in, and we really attribute, attribute the jump to that number in the implementation of Get Trained to Help, which is through our Health Promotion and Prevention Group. Experience of services, so this is people who are using these services, self-reporting how this is helping them or not helping them. And I really want to point out here that feeling accepted in their community, that was a huge jump this year, and, and what I really believe is that this is a cumulative effect of six years of providing this type of service and also the work that our Health Promotion and Prevention folks have done with our community in being educated on what mental illness is, what that means, what, what addiction recovery is and what that means to the community. It was, that is a huge factor in somebody's recovery, is really feeling accepted in the place that they live. For children and families, you can see, we've had a little bit of dip in most of those. I haven't figured out quite yet why, but I want to point out again, feeling accepted in their community more than doubled. That is a huge accomplishment. In past years, we have really stuck right around that 30%, and again, attributed to the cumulative activities of peer support and health promotion. So this slide illustrates where children and, what other systems children and families are touching. So most family receiving peer support services, they have children involved in foster care or in child welfare, juvenile justice, parents may be involved in adult addiction treatment services, or in one of our adult courts, meaning drug court, mental health court, or criminal court. There we go. Cost savings. I do want to point out that this data is from fiscal year, that says 14 down there. I apologize, it's fiscal year 15. And these cost savings can be attributed to peer support services. In the jail during this time, we had targeted the top 50 recidivists coming into the jail, the, mostly the men that, that are, they're coming in sort of through that revolving door every week, and we would have peers make contact with them, support them while they're in the jail, even if they're in for a short period of time, meeting them as they come out, supporting them in that transition back to community. And we had a 2% recidivism rate during that program. Cost savings to child welfare, what we discovered with child welfare is parents who have access to a family partner, their children are coming home 11 months sooner than children whose families do not have access to a family partner, which comes out to cost savings. Warmline calls, Warmline does a survey at the, the end of the call to find out what would you have done if Warmline was not available to you, and if somebody says, "I would have gone to the emergency room," then there's a cost attached to that. The cost of peer services in fiscal year 2015 was 1.7 million to provide these services to the community. One of the other things that we're doing in peer services is, Clackamas County has some, has pretty great notoriety in the state of Oregon and across the country at this point. I speak at conferences, I speak at summits, I get contacted on a monthly basis by other states, by other counties in our state, by provider networks that want to know how we're doing this and how we're getting the outcomes that we are. So I spend some time doing that and providing information and support, technical assistance. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I just, I just have a, a comment. Thank you for all the work you do, because we are the service provider and the manager and the coordinator for mental health. This is not a function that our municipalities have. This is one of the key things that counties do that add capacity for our municipalities, our cities, and our incorporated area. We serve everyone, and I know we work collaboratively with the state as well, but we're where this kind of treatment, this kind of help, with the boots on the ground happens. So thank you for all your hard work and for all that you do for the citizens of Clackamas County.
It sounds like the redesign investment in you has been beneficial. I had one question about where you get your funding. How are you funded?
So that's a great question, Chair Bernard. So we have a mix of, we are able to use some of our Medicaid dollars that we have with our contract with Health Share of Oregon, so they have invested in peer services. And the state, through State General Fund, we actually do get a unique service element through our contract that we hold with, with Oregon Health Authority. So again, there is recognition of the role of peers and the value of peers. So that's, that's, that's where that 1.7 million is coming from.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. Ideally, maybe we can actually have this in like a work session, because when I saw your graphs, you know, I, really, I actually have a lot of questions, but I don't think this is the appropriate place for that. But that, that did trigger, when I saw your graphs there, that data, that really inspired a lot of questions that I just think would take more time than we have, so.
Great, okay.
Be honored.
All right. With that, we're going to do a photo op.
Yep, if, if we can do that, yeah, the photo op with the, the award recipients, that would be wonderful. Thank you, Chair Bernard, for bringing us to that. So as, as I spoke earlier, last year, the board did allow us to formally recognize individuals who are doing impressive work in this community. So I have the honor of recognizing five individuals. We added a fifth, because that's what we do here. So if we could have, actually, is it okay if we have folks go ahead and come up as I, as I name them, and then we can do a photo op? Thank you. So I'd like to honor Janie Marsh, who is with Mental Health Association of Oregon, Amanda Willard, if you guys want to come up, with Youth Move, Shannon Farr with Folk Time, Angela Prater with the David Rompre Warmline and Life Works of Northwest, and David Diedrickson with Homeless Veterans Peer Support here in Clackamas County. We want to really recognize these individuals for bringing their heart, their passion, their soul to this work. They, they are who do this work and make us look really, really great here in Clackamas County, so I really want to honor them for their, for their hard work.
Great, thank you very much. Are we going to do the, oh. Are we going to do the photo? Oh.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to citizen communication. We have Peter Nordby and William Street. So William, was your dad Bill Street?
Yes, but not the one you're thinking of.
Thank you for coming. Peter, you're up first.
Thought I put my phone on silence, but it didn't. My name is Peter Nordby, and I'm here today in capacity as chair of Clackamas County Democratic Party. On behalf of the Clackamas Democratic Party, I'd like to thank you for your efforts to protect all of our residents against unconstitutional and unlawful actions of the current administration. We understand that the risks involved in seeking to provide every resident with due process, obey ORS 181A-820, and comply with 2014 court case and not violate mandatory federal requirements. That's why, at our last Democratic Central Committee meeting, by unanimous vote, the Democratic Party of Clackamas County passed a resolution supporting your efforts to make Clackamas County a safe place for all of our residents, to participate in civic life, to go to work, to attend school, and avail themselves to county protections and services. There was a considerable conversation at your policy session about criminal safety and the law. What was not discussed in depth is the reality that the law is not colorblind. These issues are not black and white, neither are they brown or white. There's considerable research that documents that people of color are routinely not viewed or treated as innocent until proven guilty. For the past two decades, many law enforcement agencies have adopted an enforcement approach based on an erroneous assumption that if they enforce the law for minor misdemeanors as if they were felonies, they would prevent felonies. In reality, all that resulted from this racial profiling was the creation of a reserve army of criminalized immigrants who are now vulnerable to deportation. The structural failure of the law has not made our community safer. To the contrary, when migrants and citizens of color see law enforcement as a threat rather than a protector, crime increases because the victims are too scared to report crimes. It's also highlighted at your policy session, the one-third drop in domestic violence reports, the increase in absenteeism at our schools, and the decrease in immunizations. In each of the above examples, the problem is caused by ICE's behavior. They view county points of service as target-rich environments, which denies due process to many of our neighbors. The challenge is to find solutions that protect due process, deliver services and protections while not exposing the immigrant population to unconstitutional action by ICE. The toolkit of solutions could include enhanced rights education, a bookmobile service approach where services and legal protections are taken to the community, offering alternative egress options from county offices, providing critical services, providing non-traditional hours of operation, partnering with religious and social justice organizations already established in the community to assist both intake and service delivery at a wide range of locations. Finally, it was painfully clear from your policy session that all elected officials are not on the same page or have the same commitment to due process. We commend the sheriff's office for recognizing the unique position of the county in regards to all of our Clackamas County lawsuit. We applaud the work of those offices under board supervision and the board members themselves for understanding that silence is the moral equivalent of consent. In these unusual times, every citizen is obligated to stand up, lend their voice to a growing chorus across the country calling for justice, fairness, and above all, due process for all residents. Doing the right thing is rarely easy and is often risky. You can count on this party and our members to support you as you move forward to defend the Constitution, Oregon law, and guard against the abuse of our friends and neighbors. Should the board decide to seek additional public input or involvement, we stand ready to assist in any way we can. Once again, thank you for addressing this important issue and difficult issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, did you had some statistics this morning, if you feel comfortable in giving those? Appreciate it.
I'd be happy to. Just in speaking to the issue of inequitable enforcement, just a couple of numbers. I'd mentioned the other day that about 40% of the people that are in the country illegally are here because of overstaying their visas. I haven't had time to look at every country in the world, but I've had some help in the research and just looking at our neighbors to the north and our neighbors to the south. 93,000 Canadians overstay their visas every year. 42,114 Mexicans overstay their visas every year. And yet, based on deportations, only 1% of Canadians are deported. That's about 646 people. 12% of Hispanic or Mexicans are deported, which strikes me as a very discriminatory process. As someone who worked in law enforcement for my career, due process, in my opinion, is the single most important aspect of what government does in its interaction with its citizens. And if that, or its residents, if that process is not properly followed, trust in government is destroyed. So to me, it is absolutely critical that due process be followed. If an individual is here illegally and has committed a crime above and beyond that that warrants their deportation, we have a system known as go to a judge and get a warrant. And it's that simple. And anything less than that, in my opinion, is not acceptable. Thank you.
Great. William?
Yes, I'd just like to add two points to Peter's testimony. At your Tuesday work session, I think there was a gap, there was much discussion about the intimidation this community feels in accessing county services. As a former labor market economist for the state of Oregon, there is an equal gap in their access to labor market protection. I did a research of Bureau of Labor and Industry final orders for 2016, year-to-date, on theft, overtime, minimum wage, prevailing wage, and failure-to-pay violations. Of the workers who were victimized during that period of time that Bulleye was able to deal with, 21% of those workers were Hispanic. This Hispanic labor force participation rate is 6.6%. So they are grossly over-victimized in the labor market as well as for county services. Secondly, Peter listed a number of things that the county could take on to help this population. I would like to suggest one possible other, and it comes from the undershare of saying that we have a special obligation as a defendant in the landmark lawsuit. And that is that the county could seek partnership with the governor and/or the appropriate state agency to develop a pilot project in Clackamas County to figure out how to enforce 181A-820. To the best of my knowledge, there is no formalized enforcement of that order, and there is clearly violation. Lastly, and in closing, as a lifelong trade unionist, we have a phrase, "Justice delayed is justice denied." Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
I do have copies of our resolution.
Sure.
Can we also get copies of your, do you have written testimony?
He does. I can send you.
That'd be great.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to, just to get our guest's attention here. Perhaps not. Yeah, I just wanted to convey that if you have, and I can express this at Tuesday's work session and a work session prior to that even, that if you've got any, and I heard of one, but if you've got any examples, real-life cases of that taking place in Clackamas County, my goal is to get to the bottom of it and make sure that due process is served. And so I think that's really, really important, that we know what's happening here in our county, because we're here. It's our role, we're elected, it's our capacity. So I'm all for that. Also, love to talk with you further, actually, about some other issues in which I think there has been some disparity in how different populations, disadvantaged populations are being treated when it comes to housing. So, you know, this is also a very important thing, I'm pretty passionate about. So I want to make sure that what we can do is what we can do within our boundaries and our jurisdictions, whether that's the courts or whether that's the sheriff's office or whether, however that's done. But I want to make sure it's something we can touch and affect in a positive way. And at the same, make sure, of course, that both the sheriffs and the courthouses can do justice where it needs to be served, that people feel safe in many aspects. But please, any of those, any of those real-life situations that we have, if you could make sure that those are conveyed to us, each of us, all five of us, as well as maybe setting up a meeting to talk about some of our disadvantaged situations as it takes place in regards to housing as well.
Absolutely, we're more than willing to do that, and we're more than willing to meet and discuss further. This is an important issue to our membership.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you for coming today. Thanks for having us. Members of the Clackamas County Commission and Chair Bernard, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Andrea Williams. I'm the executive director of CAUSA, which is a nonprofit organization that has worked to improve the lives of Latino immigrants and their families for over 20 years. I also happen to be a sort of new Clackamas County resident. I just recently bought a house in Oak Grove, and I love it, it's great. So I'm here both in my professional and in my personal capacity to request the Clackamas County Commission to consider taking one step towards what the previous testifiers mentioned, in passing something we call an inclusivity resolution. And I just passed out a copy of our model resolution that was put together by several attorneys. It's a statement of support for the county's diverse communities, but it also clarifies the county's role in regards to immigration enforcement. Inclusivity resolutions have now passed in 10 cities, including Wilsonville just recently, and places like Monmouth, McMinnville, Newburgh, and Salem. These city councils have passed these resolutions in recognition that it's an uncertain time for immigrant families, families who are really integral part of our culture and our economy here in Oregon. Many have been afraid of taking their children to school, going to doctor's appointments, carrying out basic daily activities, and even visiting local government buildings like courthouses. Indeed, there are actual real-life examples, as Commissioner Savis just said and requested. A few weeks ago, ICE arrested a father of a three-year-old girl outside the county courthouse in Oregon City, right here in the city. He was simply there to proceed with his divorce filing. So he was not there for a criminal activity, he was there to simply move forward on his divorce. And it's things like that that really prevent people from interacting with the government, and the courthouse is a really critical thing for a lot of different reasons. So, you know, I would say that while there's very little the county can do to get in the way of ICE, it is important for the functioning of the county that families won't be under threat of deportation for simply calling the sheriff or even using mental health care services, for example. So it's really important that families hear loud and clear from the county what the policy is, and that they're not using local government resources to enforce federal immigration law, or, you know, basically doing the federal government's job. And we can make sure, one step towards doing that is by passing this resolution. There's certainly many other things that can be done. I'll conclude there, but I just want to say we'd love to continue working with you all and considering this resolution. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we'll have our county council take a look at it. Commissioner Schrader?
So one of the issues that came up at our work session the other day was the notion of immigration reform. And I was just looking up your organization here. I wish you had been around in the early 80s, but you weren't. So, but my question is, so what are you folks doing to move along, real immigration reform at the federal level that will help allay all of this nonsense?
Right, ultimately, the solution lies with Congress, and we have advocated for an immigration reform bill for over a decade. It's been a long haul on that, and we got really close in 2013. It resulted in the creation of Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, created by President Obama to protect undocumented youth. But unfortunately, you know, we continue to advocate for immigration reform, but unfortunately, a lot of what we're doing is defending against policies that we think are bad ideas, such as only focusing on enforcement and not even considering a path to citizenship for the 11 million undocumented people who are here and the 140,000 that are here in Oregon. So politically, it's really bleak. We don't quite have the votes, and we haven't had the votes in Congress for a long time. And unfortunately, but also no pressure, I do think that a lot of the work and impact we can make lies locally, at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, which is why we've doubled down on working with the governor to pass that executive order she issued to expand ORS 181A-820, and want to continue working with counties and cities to figure out how else we can support our communities here.
Well, thank you for that. And if you've got, I don't have anything in front of me, if you have information on your pathways to citizenship, I would really be interested in looking at that.
Yeah, I can show you former bills that we've supported, absolutely.
That would be, that would be great. And if you can email me or somehow get me those documents, that would be fabulous. Thank you.
Ken?
You know, I was thinking about your presentation and realizing that there may be folks with a misconception out there about the issue of fear in the community. So I wanted to set something straight. Everybody who is afraid of ICE and these enforcement issues is not here illegally. There are people who are afraid because they're afraid they may be mistaken for somebody who's here illegally and thereby deported unfairly. They may have someone close to them, either in their family or friend's circle, that might be here illegally but not them, and they're afraid that exposure through them could get somebody else in trouble. So it isn't as if every single person who is of Hispanic descent or any other ethnic group is here illegally and therefore, you know, they have no rights or something to that effect. They're also concerned about their friends, their neighbors, and their families. And then I would point out, there's been a Supreme Court case that's, I think, been reaffirmed several different times, correct me if I'm wrong, but it basically says that any person here in the United States is entitled to due process. It does not say every citizen, it says every person. So I don't believe I'm incorrect on that, and I see our county council nodding his head, so I think I got that one right. Thank you.
Great. Francisco?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to testify on this wonderful idea of declaring Clackamas a sanctuary city. My name is Francisco, I'm original from El Salvador. I've been here in the United States for over 21 years. In 2014, I started getting harassed by ICE after a sheriff from Clackamas County sharing information with ICE, including my name. information with ICE, including my name, date of birth, address, and my country of origin. They show up at my house trying to take me in custody without any warrant, not even their illegal orders that they carry to detain people unlawfully. When I say sheriff department chair that information is because the district attorney responded through an email when we asked why they collude with ICE to take me in custody. His answer was, "We do not collude with ICE, we work with ICE." That's dangerous for our community. My son Dennis Moises returned to El Salvador because he was afraid of being detained and put in jail for over 20 years like they was threatening me. He ended up getting shot 16 times with M16 and three bullets from a 9 millimeter. That's what we are doing, we're deporting people to a dangerous country like El Salvador. I'm not here to create trouble, to steal, to shoot people or rape a woman. I'm here to work with my community, to pay my taxes and help with the economy of this country. This is my home. And I really appreciate that we think more toward passing a resolution to protect our immigrant community instead of allowing our local authorities to collude with ICE and taking in custody people who deserve to be joined in freedom like any human being deserves. The United States have a constitutional law and we should all respect the law. I immigrate and I didn't choose to immigrate to this country, I was forced to do it. And if we want to look back a little bit in the history, United States have a lot of responsibility for what happened in my small country of El Salvador. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today and providing voice. So, 2014, I imagine a lot has changed since then. One of our problems is that everyone who has, has been in our jail is on the web. And evidently, there is an effort on ICE to look at those. They can tell when people get out. And as far as I know, I think the sheriff, the jail said they don't, they don't call people and say they're getting out. It's just on the web and they can figure it out, they kind of watch for it. I just appreciate your voice today, you know, telling us how it really is. And thank you very much.
I do want to say that I've been in Oregon City courtrooms twice, just to witness how ICE is working. ICE is going into courtrooms and sitting beside the people who's waiting for their turn to, for court hearing. And ICE are taking them out of the room, asking them to please stand out, just to talk and don't make noise so you can be charged for disorder conduct in courtrooms. That's how they do it in Clackamas.
And we're not even talking about people who have been convicted of any crime, not even in jail. This is prior to all of that, so this is really worrisome.
Well, that's different from what we heard yesterday, that they weren't arresting people. Well, maybe they're not arresting them, but they're taking them out.
So, we just recently heard from the ICE director in Oregon that their policies have changed due to the president's executive order that now, is now having an impact and they're starting to change their policies. So, it just makes more urgent, looking at what the county can do to ensure that people can carry out their processes, through the courts especially.
I'd love to sit down, talk, talk with you because there isn't a heck of a lot the county could do. And that's one of our big concerns, is that we don't want folks to think that there is a lot we can do. We can't stop them.
That's right. We have some ideas.
Okay, well, great. I'd love to talk to you. Just get ahold of my office and we can get together. Sonia?
Yeah, so I also want to thank everyone for coming and speaking today. And Chair Bernard is right, we don't have jurisdiction over the federal government. We can't force the federal government to do or not to do anything. But what we can do as a local government and as the elected officials that are closest to the people is listen to everyone who lives in Clackamas County and to, we have a voice, we have a voice to our congressional delegation, we have a voice where we can articulate what is happening in our community and communicate that to our federal delegation. And I think what you're doing by connecting with local communities across the state and across the country is absolutely essential because we have the stories and it's very important that we communicate what is actually happening. So, I want to say thank you. I'm right alongside with Commissioner Schrader, I know this, all of this commission is very concerned about immigration reform and that we want to somehow take these collective stories and communicate what needs to happen because everyone who lives in our community is important to us. So, thank you so much.
Commissioner Savas? I just want to say, if you don't mind, is it okay if I reach out to you, your contact information?
Absolutely, and I think Ken has our emails too.
I do.
Appreciate you coming forward and as a, as a grandchild of four grandparents who were forced out of their country, who immigrated here in the 1900s, early 1900s, I, I can understand and, you know, the plight and especially the folks in your country that are going through a lot of pain. So, thanks again for sharing your story.
Thank you.
Great. Ken?
I'm brief on this one. I agree, there's not a lot proactively that we can do, but there are things that we do not have to do. And I think that probably is where we may have the most effect in terms of assisting the immigrant community. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I just want to just close, I mean, I think our, that lawsuit with regard to that one person we held for 18 hours, apparently, do an ICE detainer, was a representation that due process doesn't work in this country because we lost that lawsuit for those 18 hours.
That's right. Commissioner Schrader?
I just want to mention what I know about El Salvador because I remember in the 80s, Archbishop Oscar Romero was actually very active and he was actually assassinated in his church because it was mass in his chapel of the Hospital of Divine Providence. He was a spokesperson against poverty, social injustice, assassinations, and tortured. And I think he was recently beatified by Pope Francis because he is now considered one of the martyrs of the 20th century. And he was very active in speaking against the injustices of that. And I only mention that because, well, my heritage is Catholic, it's Italian Catholic, but I remember admiring him and I'm very glad that he is now risen to the status as someone internationally recognized as a champion for justice.
Okay, next up Alberto and Mr. Brainard. Your Mr. Brainard, your Alberto? Go ahead, take a seat.
It's perfectly safe.
Whoever wants to go first?
Well, I can go first, I don't know, unless you're on the same topic. I can see, this is my first time in front of the commission here, my name is Brainard Brower, I'm a citizen of Oregon City but Redland community. I can see there's a lot of important topics in front of you today. I have a handout, I'm not going to read it to you, it's kind of lengthy, you know, there's no.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had some, a summary of some detail. You know, I've had, you know, as I think Commissioner Bernard is aware, a good cooperation from the county in looking at this matter. And the matter is, my intersection, my main intersection of Redland, of Redland Road and Fisher's Mill, has been a dangerous location for a long time. We, various citizens have lobbied for speed reductions all the way down to school zones for many, many years. And there's been, you know, extensive attempts at doing that. And it's, and it's never gone anywhere. And one of the rationales, at least by one of the elders in the community has said, is that we haven't had any deaths. So, in the last six months, we've had one fatality. And while I was out of town, I don't know, a month or so back, there was another, but this was a serious Class A, near fatality. And that would have been a fatality if it wasn't for, and really, the emergency response people deserve tremendous credit because everything worked. They got there in time, they took the top off a car. Lifeli was available, they were there, and it was still very touch and go. So, I, I'm not certain of the, of the, of the expectation on the person, but I believe they're going to make a full recovery, that's what I heard through one, one path. And, I mean, I have damage to my property that I should be working on trying to recover insurance stuff on, but I'm doing everything I can in my good conscience to at least present this topic. The next step is really to get the community voice into the picture. But maybe it's so obvious that we can find a path. I understand there's going to be a speed study started next week. I'm really asking the commission for transparency, first of all, to be aware of it. I am asking the commission to support the process of proposing to ODOT that the speed be reduced. I think a reasonable level is 35 miles an hour. It was actually first proposed by the battalion chief who lives out in our area a couple of years ago, for a shorter area than the current speed zone. And the definition here shows how it fits the ORS, the OARs. I've done my research at this point and I think I have a proposal, so, so thank you for your attention on it.
Thank you, and I am familiar, of course. And, you know, I, I don't see why we as a commission wouldn't support it. I just wanted to mention that on Monday of next week, three different locations on Redland Road within the current 45 mile per hour zone will have counters. Gathering volume, speed data, in three different locations will provide us with a profile of speed near each end of the current zone and at the middle so we can see the speed pattern. And my suggestion yesterday is call your friends and have them drive slow down Redland Road, but there, it's going to have to be a big crowd, it's going to have to be 24 hours a day.
Yeah.
I, I mentioned also to you that when I was mayor of Milwaukee, Lake Road, we tried and tried and finally got ODOT to lower it because, and you mentioned some stuff in here which I need to read up on a little bit, about where we have more flexibility than is suggested, but we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, if I can add, I mean, my research with ODOT is that, I mean, first of all, they seem to have a pretty, quite a bit of flexibility in their, in their OARs. We can also, as a county, go to, go back to ODOT and, and propose, you know, whatever, the, go in front of the board there, the traffic safety board, you know, and ask for it to happen anyway. One of the challenges with this three-speed zone check is that we have a downhill, serious downhill going into Redland. And that has a natural tendency of making the speeds look higher than, than would be appropriate or otherwise natural. So, it's a, it's probably been the biggest challenge.
Yeah, I just want to add, your characterization of ODOT being flexible is very different from mine.
Well, I'm only going by speaking to one person and reading the official regulations. So.
Thank you.
Obviously, I don't have the experience.
Ken?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I've been driving that direction a lot lately. Been through that intersection more times than I can count, going different places in rural areas. And I agree with your assessment personally about the risk that's there, trying to get onto Redland Road coming in from the Oregon City area and getting ready to make that hook over to Fisher's Mill. And the traffic is coming in there at 50, 55 miles an hour. It's, it's a dangerous spot and a slowdown is a good idea.
Yeah, it just seems so obvious, so.
Drive it a few times and you'll find out how obvious it is, no question about it.
Yeah, be there and watch it and you just, you see all these close calls and it's scary.
Roberto, I mean Alberto, thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Chair Bernard, county commissioners. My name is Alberto Moreno, I am the governor-appointed chair for the Commission on Hispanic Affairs for the State of Oregon. As you know, there are half a million Latinos in Oregon. We are Oregon's teachers, her doctors, her farm workers, her restaurant and hotel workers. We make meaningful contributions to the state, to her counties, to her cities. In 2007, Latino-owned businesses had a record of $1,663,452,000 in receipts. In Oregon, Latinos had purchasing power of $9.2 billion in 2014, a 660% increase from 1990. There are 29,138 Latinos who live, pray, and work in Clackamas County alone. And you have 12,334 migrant and seasonal farm workers in your county. I know because I commissioned the Oregon Enumeration Study that details as so. Farm workers who are integral to generating over $5.5 billion in annual agricultural activity in Oregon. While it is clear we make meaningful contributions and serve as the backbone for a multitude of industries, we do not always share equally in Oregon's prosperity, nor do we enjoy the same protection of law. This is especially true for undocumented workers and families in Oregon and in Clackamas County. Undocumented workers who, according to the Oregon Center for Public Policy, paid $181 million in state taxes last year alone. Undocumented families who rent, who buy homes, and who shop in Clackamas County. But because of federal immigration, I want to underscore federal immigration enforcement. Our communities do not feel safe, our families fear going to school, to work, even to pray. Domestic violence victims, as you have heard, are afraid to come forward, are afraid to go out to buy groceries, to take their children to get immunized, are afraid to take their children to school. We have become afraid, we've become afraid of our county workers, of our schools, of our courthouses, of any and all government agencies. And soon, soon something will start to happen in Clackamas County. Soon, we will stop purchasing, soon we will stop spending $9.2 billion. Soon, we will stop shopping for groceries, for clothing, for cars, for houses. Soon, crops will rot on the vine, there will be no one to tend our Christmas tree farms, which are numerous in Clackamas County, our nurseries, no busboys or dishwashers for our restaurants, no hotel workers to make our beds, no construction workers to mend our roads, to work cheaply on our new roofs. That is why we need to make Clackamas County an inclusive community, to make meaningful policy changes which restrict any county employee from collaborating with federal immigration enforcement, reminding us that immigration enforcement is a federal function. And as such, we invite you to prohibit the use of any county dollars for any kind of immigration enforcement or collaboration. I know I'm out of time and want to thank you for your consideration of this important issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And by the way, we do not spend any county resources or money to help immigration, that's the law, and we are following the law. So, thank you very much for coming. And it'd be great, do you have a website that we could take a peek and get some of those facts?
I was just going to say, I'd like to get that information.
Give us, email us your, all those numbers. I tried to write them down and I didn't get all that I wanted.
And, and I apologize, I ran out of time, I even have more data to share with you.
We want your data.
And I am happy to email my testimony to Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner, apologies, Chair Bernard, to Commissioner.
I'll see to it that my colleagues get it, no problem.
Wonderful, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Great, thank you for coming. The next item on the agenda, we have a few public hearings and I assume we're going to announce we're pulling one and amending the other.
That's, that is the, that is the case and I'll, I'll leave that to County Council, Stephen Madcor, to explain for you. But we will be pulling the third item on our second reading of three ordinances, and that's the item related to Chapter 8.02. that's the item related to Chapter 8.02, Transient Room Tax. That's going to be rescheduled to June the 15th for consideration at that time. So, we do have then a second reading of an ordinance to, amendment to Title III regarding elections, and also second reading of an ordinance involving amendments to Chapter 6.06, Park Rules, and declaring an emergency. And that particular item also has some changes pending for it.
Chair Bernard, I'm going to have to apologize. I have to be somewhere in about 20 minutes, so I'm going to step out and.
Five-dollar fine.
Yeah, five-dollar fine. But I know you will, colleagues will take care of it, and I've given Commissioner Savis the arts and culture activities.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Drive safe.
I will.
Good morning, Commissioners, Stephen Madcor, County Council. We initially had three public hearings scheduled for you this morning. As Administrator Krupp mentioned, we are pulling one, continuing it on June 15th. That is with the Transient Room Lodging Tax Ordinance Amendments. We are going to continue with two. The first one, we're going to do them individually. The first one is Chapter III of our code. Existing is Chapter 3.01. It concerns the clerk's office. We are striking that chapter in its entirety. It concerns referendum and initiatives. That is inconsistent with state law. State law controls that entire process, so we're striking what we have and resorting to the process set forth in the ORS. That is one provision that we're doing. We are also adding two separate sections. One is 3.04, which concerns a jurisdiction's requirement to file boundary changes with the clerk, to maintain the accuracy of jurisdictional boundaries and the voter rolls and things along those lines. Clackamas Water District had some issues, Oregon City, so it's really ensuring that we have the most recent voter and district boundary data. The second one is 3.05, which is basically just codifying a prior board order about the qualifications for the justice of the peace to serve at justice court. It has to be a member in good standing of the Oregon State Bar and a few other criteria. That was not in our code. It was in a board order when it established justice court. So, we are incorporating that into our code itself. So, two, striking the one provision, 3.01, adding 3.4 and adding 3.5. And I'm here to answer any questions the board might have with those chapter amendments.
No questions. But we're going to do one motion on two. The parks ones included in that motion.
That will be second. We'll take Chapter III first. We're going to do the reading first, and then we're going to do the adoption of that, and then we will go to Chapter VI, the Parks District.
Okay.
I, on the script, I put that we'll read both of the ordinances by title only with one motion.
Well, we can just do two. I mean, it's, so first, I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter, the huge crowd we have. Don't rush up here all at once. I'll close the public portion and, got to make sure I know what I'm asking. Close the public portion, ask the, read the motion.
So, I move to read Ordinance 3-2017 by title only.
Thank you.
Oh, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second to read Ordinance Number 03-2017 by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. Mary?
Okay, Ordinance Number 03-2017, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Title III, Elections.
And we need to vote on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four, zero. And entertain a motion to read, oh wait, no, you got to tell us.
Nope, I'm going to give you a little intro on the next item, and that's going to be Ordinance Number 04, 2017, and you have, this concerns park rules. You heard this on April 13th, and this is the one where it is clearing, or housekeeping of sorts on park rules. It also prohibited nudity in our parks. It also proposed a prohibition on drones in our parks. And that is in the current draft that you have before you, but we are recommending that we strike the proposed prohibition on drones and be silent on it. The reason being is because the legislature has enacted some legislation concerning unmanned aerial aircraft, which would arguably conflict with this and preempt local jurisdictions from regulating in drones. So, our recommendation is that we visit page six of 11 in your packet, which is subsection F, where it says fireworks, weapons, and drones, strike and drones, and in front of weapons, add and. So, it will say fireworks and weapons, striking and drones. And we go down to sub five and strike that proposed section in its entirety, where it says, "No person shall operate in unmanned aerial aircraft such as a drone." So, we had proposed restricting drones, and we are now proposing that you strike that prohibition. So, drones arguably could be allowed, but they would be dictated by state law, not by county law. That is the only change we are proposing with this. We've run it by the guys in Parks, and they agree with our recommendations. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have with that.
Just that, when we make the motion, we'll have to make note of that.
When you make the motion, I have some language, which would be, "I move we adopt with today's proposed changes, Ordinance Number," and I can give you that script. That is, of course, if this board is in agreement with the recommendations.
Okay, Commissioner Savis?
I'm struggling with this one. So, I don't understand why we cannot restrict on county property, a park, why we cannot restrict the use of drones. Granted, I understand that, you know, I mean, there's a privacy issue. So, what we're saying basically is what? That someone could come to a county park and fly a drone. Is that what we're saying?
We are not saying that. We are saying that the state has legislated to such an extent in this area of law that it is preempted. County authority generally is over matters of county concern but for areas of law that the state has legislated so heavily that it is preempted. And the section that we are resorting to is ORS 3, or 837, and it essentially says that no local government may enact an ordinance or resolution that regulates the ownership or operation of unmanned aircraft systems. And it's my office's assessment that prohibiting drones on county land is a regulation regulating the operation of an unmanned aircraft. So, what it says here is that the state legislation in that area, so this section 837 legislates on what the sheriffs or law enforcement can use with drones. They can use it for crime scene investigation, they can use it for search and rescue, they can use it for training, they cannot use it for establishing probable cause or reasonable suspicion. It also sets forth penalties of somebody who uses a drone over your personal property. There is a civil penalty associated with that as well. So, if somebody were to use a drone over county property and the county were to object, there would be civil penalty associated with that person's unauthorized continued use of that drone over county property.
So, can you maybe elaborate on that, on that aspect of it? What is the state law? I mean, and who enforces that? Can county employees enforce that at the county park? Can the sheriff's office enforce that? Because we have gotten ourselves tied, for example, marijuana regulation, okay? It's state law, you can do this, you can do that, but we can't, we can't enforce it because it's not clear. So, is it ambiguous as well, is who enforces that? If you say you can't use that, if state law says you cannot enforce it, or, no, you, no, if the state law says you cannot regulate it, does it clearly say that we can enforce state law?
No, it does not. Jurisdiction is with the Oregon Aviation Agency.
That's my difficulty with it. So, so, so if somebody can come to the park and fly a drone, they're violating the state law, but we can't enforce it. Is that, that's what we're saying.
No, there would be potential civil penalties for it, though, if somebody were to.
Civil, but, but I'm saying us, the county, we can't enforce it. It's a civil, it's not, it's not, we can't enforce a civil.
There is nothing in, I haven't read anything in the code, in the state statute. This is new legislation from Salem, and I haven't read anything saying that it's going to be criminal sanction for flying a drone. There might be FAA requirements, there are, but there might be FAA penalties and also Oregon Aviation penalties. But in terms of county folks enforcing something, I would think not.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing to enforce. We, we're just not prohibiting it.
Correct. That's the prohibition. I don't want us to get necessarily, this happened when we did the secondhand pawn shop thing about regulating the sale of firearms. There's a hook in state law saying county jurisdictions can't regulate the secondhand sale of firearms. Cities can, but counties can't. So, that's another issue that the state has legislated so broadly in that counties are essentially prohibited from legislating in an area that conflicts with state law. And it's called preemption, it's legal doctrine, and that's what this section clearly says. So, I mean, we can revisit it, I just recommend not including it at this point because it is in clear conflict with state law.
I was more worried you were going to amend the nudity part. Maybe Ken wants to pull that one out. Ken?
Why does everybody look at me when it comes down to that one?
Because it's smart.
I did have a question. So, the state law preempts and says that we can't prohibit drones in a park. Can we in any way, shape, or form regulate time, place, and manner?
Those are usually restricted to zoning and land use, but I think we will be able to regulate them if we want to. We just want to do it in a little bit more of a careful, methodical manner. We're not saying we're not going to revisit this. This language is.
There's the real answer.
This language is too broad right now as presented. And, yeah, yeah. So, no, we're happy to do it, we just don't want to put it out there and have to pull it back again, it's best just to pull it right now.
Sort of like the Supreme Court's decision on, on the prohibition of weapons in Washington, DC. It was, you couldn't have one, period. And the court ruled that is too broad. You can't prohibit people from owning a weapon in Washington, DC, but you can do reasonable regulation. So, it's kind of the same principle.
Yep, no, we will definitely, we're not abandoning this entirely, we will revisit it, we just don't want to endorse this language at this time.
Okay.
But enforcement of time, place, and manner would be very difficult. Well, with that, let me see, so, what's your recommended motion, or is that after?
The language would say, "I move we adopt with today's proposed changes, Ordinance Number 04-2017, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 6.06, Park Rules, and Declaring an Emergency."
Okay, but first, we need to read it by title only.
And first, we need to open the public hearing.
Yeah, that's true. I'd like to open the public hearing on 04-2017. Anyone wishing to testify on that matter? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and entertain a motion to read by title only first, I would think.
I move we adopt with today's proposed changes.
We have to read both.
First, we got to do the title.
I'm sorry, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 04.
Need to move to read the 04-2017 by title only.
I apologize, Mr. Madcor handed me something, and I assumed, but that was for later.
Yes.
If you'd like, I have it here in front of me, we can move on. I move to read Ordinance 04-2017 by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to read Ordinance Number 04-2017 by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Almost forgot to vote. All right, Mary.
Okay, Ordinance Number 04-2017, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 6.06, Park Rules, and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay, so, in this case, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 04-2017 as amended.
I move we adopt with today's proposed changes, Ordinance Number 04-2017, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 6.06, Park Rules, and Declaring an Emergency.
Second.
I usually read it back, but since it's not in front of me, motion's been to.
Moved and seconded.
I always like, I always like to read it back. That was something they taught us at county college.
Okay, read.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt with today's proposed changes, Ordinance Number 04-2017, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 6.06, Park Rules, and Declaring Emergency. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four, zero.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the clerk of the board for getting us squared away on exactly how to follow this process. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, but I messed up in the first place.
That's okay.
Oh, no.
Okay, so, yeah.
I did, I wanted to back up for a moment, if I may, Mr. Chairman. There was a typo on Chapter 3.05, Elections to Hold the Office of Justice of the Peace. And it says there, loss of membership, lapse of membership, of suspension of membership. It meant or suspension of membership. And just so that there wouldn't be any syntax confusion in the future, we might want to make sure that that's corrected.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, since we removed Ordinance Number 05-2017 and set a specific date, we're going to move on to the next public hearing, board order approving, Don, why don't you go ahead?
Certainly, yes. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider a board order to approve the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for Public Rights of Way. I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Besner to come up to the dais to talk about this item with you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Commissioner Fisher will be right back.
So, I am here today to recommend you approve the resolution before you to adopt Department of Transportation and Development's proposed transition plan for the American, Americans with Disabilities Act. So, what is it? Basically, the county, it's a federal requirement under the ADA Act, which was passed in 1990, that we have a transition plan, which will help us get from, get complete compliance with our curb ramps, and that's what we're here to talk about today, curb ramps. Eighty-five percent of our curb ramps, or 4,000 of them, were built before the ADA was passed in 1990. And private groups can take legal action against a government entity to gain compliance. It's not just the law, though, it's also the right thing to do. There's a need for Clackamas County residents. About one-eighth of our residents actually have a disability. So, the plan basically paves the way for those folks to be able to get around the community. To develop the plan, we took, took a lot of work. We evaluated over 4,700 curb ramps and 69 traffic signals. We found that most of them needed improvements to get compliance. And again, 85% were built before the law existed, and there actually were standards. Unfortunately, this is consistent with other agencies around the state as well. We're all working on it. It is our responsibility to fix those that predate the ADA. It's, we do have to go back, no matter when they were built. So, we sought input from those with disabilities around Clackamas County, and asked them, "What are your priorities for these improvements?" And they came back with, "We want the busiest roads first." So, we basically, taken that to mean our arterials and collectors. And again, arterials and collectors are technical terms, it's how we classify our roads. Arterials are, generally speaking, are most heavily, heavily traveled, collectors are in the middle, and then local roads are, are the lowest. So, the schedule for coming up with the, to complete these, it's obviously dependent on funding, and all we have in transportation is our road fund. But we are starting already. We have a project already this summer that's consistent with the plan. On Oak Grove Boulevard, we're going to improve 15 to 20 curb ramps that currently don't meet ADA. It was a high priority location, and also, we did an analysis and showed there were a lot of people that needed it, a lot of people with disabilities in the area, which is another thing we're going to use, is what the community need is in that area. At our current funding levels, through capital projects, through extra money, which is just ADA projects, through development coming in and fixing ramps, our highest priority locations or the arterials would take about 12 and a half years. So, we can ask, is that a reasonable timeframe, a reasonable risk? And what we can look at is what other agencies who have actually had lawsuits filed recently, how have they, what were they comp... And what we can look at is what other agencies who have actually had lawsuits filed recently, how have they, what were they compelled to do? And ODOT recently settled one just in November or December where they agreed to fix their state highways, which are like our arterials, within 15 years. So with our arterials, we're actually going to do a little bit better than, than ODOT. BEN settled a lawsuit back in '04 that required them to upgrade everything that they had built since 1992. So a much smaller amount, and that's what their settlement was. So I feel pretty comfortable with our plan, that we're, we're doing as good or better than these other agencies and what their settlements were with the groups that had, that had brought lawsuits. Our second priority locations would be the collector streets. That would take about another 10 years after that to get those done. Commitment of additional funds, obviously, would allow us to change the timeline somewhat. You know, we are a little constricted with our ability to put work out and the number of contractors available. I guarantee if we put out a contract for 4,000 ramp upgrades, we would not have a contractor with the capacity to do it. So you can only do these so often. But if there's a statewide transportation bill passed that we're all hoping will, will occur, we can revisit the timelines. But in any event, this plan is our roadmap to success. It's our roadmap to completion, and it will work in any funding scenario. It's just, you know, it's the way we're going to prioritize the improvements. So with that, we do recommend you approve the resolution and see if you have any questions.
Well, one, one comment is, we're approving the ADA Transition Plan for Public Right-of-Way, but we could specifically state that the, the schedule of replacement, the schedule and budget for removal of barriers to ADA accessibility may be amended should additional resources be available. Or one of the things that I think we might want to consider when we talk about our vehicle registration fee that we're coming up, we're going to be meeting with the cities on, is, is looking at that possibility of adding a dollar or two to that to help facilitate this. And, and so you have a, a budget figure, an annual budget figure right now.
Yeah, we do. Right now, we're using $180,000. But the plan, actually, on page 22 of the plan, there's some text that we added to address different levels of funding and what different timelines would be.
I guess it's, as presented, and I know we have our issues about maybe seeing a faster timeframe for implementation, which I agree with. I think it's a, it's a plan that we're required to have. And so it's not really how the implementation of the plan can be accelerated without a change in the plan, as I, as I read the language. So I, I think I'm comfortable with the language, but I do think it's probably appropriate that we say and, and plan for a faster implementation than what the plan states.
We could certainly do that with funding.
Commissioner?
So just a couple of things. I really appreciate the spirit of this plan, especially the way that people with disabilities are characterized and how they are such an important part of our community and acknowledging just the spirit of access and how important that is for everyone in our community. I, unfortunately, you know, we had a policy session, and I just got the language. I just reviewed it this morning. I still have some concerns about, with additional funding, the best we can do according to this plan is in 26 years. But if we, even with additional funding, it's going to take 54 years. So it's hard for me to support a plan written as is without some sort of qualification about the policy and the values of the board to do things more quickly. So that's just, oh, you can, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the 54 years is actually every single ramp, and that's actually with exactly how we're funding it right now. It's not with additional funding. So that's the $180,000 if we kept that forever until we were finished. And it is also every ramp in our system, some of which we're going to determine at the end, don't need anything necessarily because there's not even a sidewalk there yet, for, for example. So it actually would be quite a bit shorter. But yeah, the 54 years is simply if we don't do anything differently.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's a concern for me because that's how it's written. So like, as Chair Bernard said, some sort of policy direction about changing that, I think, I think is important. I do understand that there is a requirement in the plan to have a schedule. So I know that that's a requirement. The other piece that I was concerned about, and I didn't have much time before this meeting, so I tried to reach out to some stakeholders to say, "Hey, what was your involvement with this plan?" And they didn't have involvement with the plan for the people, the folks that I talked to, but I didn't have a lot of time. So I'm curious, what was your public process?
Well, we actually did meet with and contact several groups. So I'd be curious to get the names of the ones that you did.
Well, I didn't have much time. So which groups did you connect with?
Well, Steve Williams, who's one of our senior planners, will come in and he can address that part.
Good morning. Steve Williams, Principal Transportation Planner, Department of Transportation and Development. We did a pretty extensive outreach process last year. At, at the beginning of the development of this plan, we reached out to private organizations within the county and the region that provide services to those with disabilities. We reached out through all of our senior centers. We reached out through the Disability Services Advisory Committee, and they actually provided quite a bit of, of input to us. We also met with the Aging Services Council here in the county. And additionally, we met with the Developmental Disabilities Services Council and received, did a presentation for them and received their input. That was at the beginning of the process. At the end of the process, we put this product out for review with all of the same groups of folks.
Okay, so all those groups had a review of this plan?
It was submitted to them, and they received an invitation to submit comments, to contact me, anything like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can add that we did an awful lot of social media. I kept seeing it on my own phone because I follow the county. But yeah, so that's what we did.
Okay, well, one of the, in just the short time that I was reaching out to stakeholders, one suggestion to the plan was another level of prioritization, where if someone lives in a community and they have an access issue, that they can, there's a process to bring that to light and have that go higher on the priority list.
That's completely reasonable.
Yeah. So I mean, so that's just another, what I would like to suggest is just to, I think, you know, for you to take this input, to give me an opportunity to get some further input and work with you and maybe bring it back. Not too long, but maybe in a couple of weeks if we have time to do that.
Guys, good with that?
Well, I was prepared to move forward, quite frankly, because flexibility in terms of, of advancing the process is simply based on how much money we're able to put forward. If we get money from the state, we can put more money into the project. If we decide in our budget process, we want to put more money into it other than the $180,000 a year that we're currently allocating. It doesn't strike me as necessary to have staff come back. The, the additional funds allow them to do what they need to do. When I read the report, I saw that the community was, was clearly involved in the process. They prioritized those projects that were the, that would have the greatest impact on their communities. And it looked like within five years, if I remember correctly, the highest priority items would all be done. And I think in another five years, the second highest priority items would all be done. If we simply stayed, or maybe it's 12 and a half years, if we simply, if we simply stayed with $180,000 a year going forward. So I, speaking for myself at least, I'm, I'm prepared to, to vote to go forward, get it done. And if there's an adjustment in the budget in the future that we need to, to take care of, that would be fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Just to clarify, it's the top three priorities of the arterials. So the top three priorities would be done in 12 and a half years. And then the collectors were four through six.
Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I don't think we're casting anything in stone. I will say that, you know, if we are successful at the state level in getting some more transportation funding through a transportation bill, that we would be able to prioritize those available dollars that can be allowed to do that just for that purpose. So I'm, I think we have the flexibility to satisfy Commissioner Fisher's concern in how it's implemented and the timing, as is currently drafted. So I too, as Commissioner Anderson stated, am prepared to move forward with just putting the plan in place and, and that we can deal again with how we implement it and how we fund it, because that is really the, the big issue. And going through hearing and some presentations from ODOT and some of the transportation committees, and knowing that every jurisdiction is facing this, and there's been a lot of attention drawn to this, that this is just the beginning of a long, long process.
Well, let me add that. If Commissioner Fisher would like to wait a couple of weeks, I'd be happy to support her in this because it isn't, it isn't something we have to do today. There's only, there's also one other thing that she mentioned, is that when we did our retreat, we talked about areas where the greatest poverty is. And while this plan may not address that, that's more of a legislative thing that this commission is saying. We should invest in areas where we haven't invested in the past. That we should focus some of that investment there. So I'm going to leave it up to you. If you'd like to wait a couple of weeks, I, I'm going to vote. We'll just move it to another period. Yes?
I just wanted to say with our busy schedule and a couple of canceled business meetings, this, we wouldn't be able to put this back on until June 15th or June 22nd.
I keep it May June.
That's a month. That's okay.
Yeah, so let's just, since we're going to be maybe 2-2, let's just set this for the next meeting. But we wouldn't necessarily have to have a presentation. Is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'd have to have a public hearing. This could take a few minutes. Wouldn't it?
I, well, I believe, Mr. Chair, you could open the public hearing.
Yeah, let's do that.
Take testimony now, and then we can then follow up at a subsequent.
Leave it open for testimony. Okay. All right, so now I've lost my paperwork. Where am I? I mixed it up. Okay, so where? So I will open the public hearing on the American with Disabilities Act ADA Transition, Transition Plan for Public Right-of-Way and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. We'll leave the record open and set a date. Do, can, do we have to have a specific date?
June 15th?
Can I, can I, can I just make a comment? I, I think that if we're really going to do something substantive, and maybe it's better if we can postpone it, if, if there is impetus here to postpone it, maybe it's better that we postpone it till after the legislature's, till signing die, because we'll know what we have for transportation funding or not. Because it all boils down to funding and understanding what you can spend with the state statute restrictions. We need to understand that. That is, that's the component that we're really facing, is funding. And this is, this applies at the state level on state highways as well. It's a very complex issue, state transportation funding, and, and I think that I don't see any funding changes between now and signing die.
So one, one concern is that we have a plan we haven't adopted might open up some liability?
That's right.
There's no hard and fast deadline. We just want to have one, obviously, because we're required to. Yeah, I mean, waiting is, you know, it, it's okay. I, I would say that the money part, you know, that's going to be dependent every year on the county commissioners passing a budget. So I mean, you know, we can put whatever we want in the plan, but it's every year, there's going to be a new budget, and that's how we'll decide and figure out how we can put money towards it, so.
Well, then, then we won't even open the public hearing for now. We'll set it for a date after the...
We just did?
No, we didn't. Set it for a date you mentioned after the legislature ends, which puts us in December of 2090.
Hearing is currently open right now.
The hearing is open as we speak.
We can just, yeah.
I have a...
Well, I could just back the tape up, take that section out.
I must be missing something here, so I'm going to ask my colleague, what, what is the issue that you're trying to address? Because I'm not clear on that.
So the issue, this is a plan that prioritizes a process for how we move forward. And I've received some input, and I would like to, just some more time to receive more input and, and get some advice regarding prioritizing specific need for people in the community. A way to prioritize, which is not part of this plan. That and additional information on the, there have been lawsuits. I am, I want to, I want time to talk with staff because I haven't had that opportunity to sit down and ask my questions, which I don't want to take the time right now. But in light of what the lawsuit that was just settled with ODOT and how they went to the 15-year period, which was a compromise, I want more information about what that actually meant, what that means for us. I don't want to subject us to liability, which I think could be a possibility. I wanted to talk to staff about that. I just have questions about this that I would just like some more time.
Well, I, I don't see any reason why we'd have to wait for the legislature to end, though. We could just do that specific date because the plan has the flexibility, should we get more funds, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I don't know why we can't let, let Commissioner Fisher get her answers, set the date in June, right? And leave the hearing open, and so people can submit testimony during that time. You might have some folks who'd like to, and then we'll have the, the hearing on June 13th?
June 15th at 10:00 AM.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll set that hearing date for June 15th at 10:00 AM. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRIMET, For Oregon Department of Transportation Special Transportation Formula Discretionary Funds for Services for Clackamas County Seniors and People with Disabilities. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes, and Under Public and Government Affairs, We Have a Board Order Approving an Extension of the Cable Television Franchise with Cable Telephone Association, DBA Canbee Telecom. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
My second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Hearing non-motion carries. The next item is County Administrator Updates.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I do realize that the hour is running late, and we have a strategy meeting coming up. But I had a couple of items I really did want to share with you. And we have, for our strategy meeting, we've ordered pizza, and I promise you, there's no anchovy on any of it, so.
Is there pepperoni?
I'm sure there's pepperoni there.
But you can't go to me anyway.
But I, I wanted to share a couple of items with you. First, last week was the deadline for our River Health Stewardship Program, Grant Program. And I understand that we have received some 17 total applications with projects and programs aimed at improving our local watersheds. We've had applications from a wide variety of community groups, nonprofit organizations, and businesses. And next week, we'll be evaluating the proposals. We have $240,000 of funding to be able to allocate to good projects that have been submitted. I'll keep you informed as we learn of this. It's actually a timely, given that next week is our Clean and Plentiful Drinking Water Week. Then I received a note regarding our Transportation and Development staff. We continue to receive accolades about our staff. In a couple of weeks back, our Director of DTD, Barbara Cartmill, received the following note from local business owner Doug about permit technician Jody Lagerway. And Doug says, "I had exceptional service earlier today from Jody Lagerway. I was applying for a development permit as well as an entrance permit when she shared how I could combine both into one. She did several things that seemed to be the right thing to do, which isn't always the case when dealing with the government, especially governments needing money. These things took extra time, and her thoughtfulness was not lost on me. The bottom line is, I hope you salute a job well done by Ms. Lagerway. And I know that she seemingly took a far sighted and instinctive view of doing right things for me, and I very much appreciated it." So I just wanted to thank Doug for the note, and I especially want to thank Jody for doing the right thing and demonstrating our core values of service professionalism. professionalism, and respect. Thank you, Jody. And then I received late yesterday an email from Eleanor Hunter regarding Lindsay Wild, who works in our Business and Community Services Department, basically wanting to commend an exemplary employee of the county, Ms. Lindsay Wild, a property resource agent in Business and Community Services. "She worked with myself and two of my neighbors with great professionalism, integrity, and most especially humanity and genuine concern. What really stands out about Lindsay are her problem-solving skills and tenacity. She was a joy to work with from day one, when I showed up unannounced at the DSB, to the final signing, notarizing, and recording of paperwork. My neighbors and I are in complete agreement that Lindsay Wild redefines the meaning of county employee." So thank you, Ms. Hunter, and a special thanks to Lindsay for providing outstanding service. Ken?
I just wanted to know, when you receive letters of that nature on behalf of our employees, do they go into their personnel jackets?
Oh, yes.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, well, first up is Commissioner Fisher.
All right. So just want to share with my colleagues, I spent yesterday in Salem advocating for justice reinvestment. It was really interesting because the way it was organized was around, we went with different counties. So we, I went with Maloma County and Washington County, and we learned all about what justice reinvestment is doing around the state. So just to give a little bit of information about this, justice reinvestment is money that goes back into programs that prevent recidivism and keeps our community safe. What we have chosen in Clackamas County, each county is different. Each county looks at their local needs. What we have chosen to do is invest resources in victim services for domestic violence and children, and also we have, we have the Transition Center, which helps people who are leaving the jail receive services for employment and transitioning back into the community, and we have focused on drug and alcohol treatment. Some interesting facts from yesterday is that we have provided more GEDs out of the Transition Center than Clackamas Community College. That was pretty interesting. And another interesting fact is that 99% of the folks who have gone through the Transition Center have not gone to prison. So that is another interesting statistics. Justice reinvestment has saved taxpayers in the state $250 million because we have not needed to construct a new correctional facility for the state, which is a huge savings. And because of that, justice reinvestment dollars, just so my colleagues know, the current service level is in the co-chair's budget, but what is being requested, and what the lobby day yesterday was to ask for $52 million back based on the savings that justice reinvestment dollars have provided for the state back to be distributed around the state. Clackamas County gets a small little piece, $2.48 million, comes to us out of those, out of that $52 million, and we have put it to really good use. And just to highlight, focusing on prevention, like my mother used to say, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and these programs really help us keep our community safe.
Well, great. I actually served on the grant committee to distribute those dollars, and I'm hoping that they call us back together again and ask us to do that. And we were actually advocating for that, too, because I'm on the Community Corrections Commission, and we're trying to figure out how we're gonna manage the cuts in community correction along with those, those other dollars. Measure $57 is another issue. Great, thanks. Thanks for your work. I didn't know you had done that. That's always fun. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I met with State Legislator Karen Power, one of our local ones, and Rick Gruen, our Parks Department gentleman about cross-laminated timber. Karen was interested in pursuing that at the state level and seeing how she can help us with our objectives in providing jobs in that field. Yesterday, went to the luncheon, as many of us did, at the Abernathy Center for Parrot Creek. When I left, I know they had raised over $35,000, and I know that it exceeded that. Just don't know what the final numbers were. But as, when we talk about investing in rehabilitation and preventing people from going to prison, Parrot Creek's a good example of earlier intervention, helping young men get, as we would say in the Marine Corps, get squared away and go on to live a more productive life instead of winding up in prison. And I don't know their exact success rate, but I understand it to be better than the, than the alternative, shall we say. And then, over the weekend, I had the pleasure of going to the Bitemount Hood, where they did a food drive as part of that event, and raised quite a bit of money for food for those that are disadvantaged in our communities. Went to a flower planting in Oregon City, where they were doing some beautification of their community, and to the park in Oak, excuse me, not Oak Grove, Gladstone, where they had a get-together of the community and things at their little park. So it was time well spent. And moving from that to our Dog of the Week. So this is Chip. Yes, like chocolate chip. He is a sensitive three-year-old Chihuahua terrier who hasn't had many adventures in life before this big adventure he is having now. He is learning that when he wears his harness and leash, he can go outside and sniff so many smells in the grass. It's a weird feeling to be on a leash, but Chip is learning to enjoy it. He really likes people, but it takes a lot of courage for him to make new friends. Are you the one to help him on this new adventure? For more information about Chip and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Paul?
Well, I hope those who just watched that aren't going to be speeding down to the dog, our dog services deal to adopt that little guy, but I'm sure he's going to go fast. So, good job, Chip. Commissioner Schrader's not here, so I'll just, in her absence, I'll read what she asked me to read about the Arts and Culture Activities Updates on the screen. Thank you, Mary. The Clackamas Repertory Theater, The Rabbit Hole, a free reading of The Rabbit Hole by David Lindsay-Aber. Rabbit Hole is a drama that explores a family's grief over the death of a young child. On Saturday, May 6, 1:00 p.m. at the Happy Valley Library. I'm assuming that date reflects the Clackamas Repertory Theater, okay. The book launch celebration, the Milwaukee Poultry Series and the Poetry Box present a reading to celebrate the lunch, or the launch, of the new issue of the poem, Poem in Pigeon, Poems from the Garden. Enjoy this collection of over 80 poems that celebrates dirt under our fingernails, sharing zucchini with our neighbors, seed catalog dreams, and this labor of love we call gardening. That's on Saturday, May 6, between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. at the Letting Library Pawn House in Milwaukee. And for more information, you can see on the screen, you can go to www.clackamasartsalliance.org for more info. And that just happens by coincidence, be a great segue what I want to talk about. That's really about neighborhoods. It's springtime, and I was out mowing my lawn yesterday and saw some neighbors walking about, some new neighbors walking about, so happened to engage in conversation. I just wanted to just, something I've been working on, I think's really driven me to a lot of community work, is about how we really cherish our neighborhoods and the people who live in them. And fortunately, I'm in an area where it's, I think it's really, we have a diverse community in many ways. And I think that strengthening our communities and protecting our neighborhoods is something I'm very passionate about, and I think there's no better time right now than to get out in your neighbors, get out in your neighborhoods, work in your yards, and help your neighbors with theirs, and just to enjoy one another's yards or gardens. And this is just a great time. I know that it's just, a lot of people are in a very friendly state. And as the weather gets better, we'll have more of those opportunities. But I know we all take pride in our neighborhoods, and it's something that's important to me, and it's probably important to a lot of folks, that we keep our neighborhoods clean and safe and friendly. And with that, because we, I've been here so long, I'm gonna cut my comments short today.
All my neighbors appeared to have burst into flames yesterday. Turns out that they were all vampires. Hadn't seen the sun in so long. I probably have a sunburnt head. I'd like to relay some sad news. Over the weekend, we lost one of our longtime television video producers, Mark Ivanish. Mark worked, oh, this is the guy who died? Oh, my goodness.
Oh, my goodness.
It's always great to have pictures, because, you know, I knew his first name, but I didn't know, I mean, that's terrible. My goodness. Mark worked with the county for over 16 years and played a key role in many of our most important productions. Since 2001, he directed, edited, and/or voiced over 1,000 videos for us. He was known by the staff as the voice of Clackamas County. Mark was a fixture in our production booth, typically being a video director of our weekly business meeting. He had probably been to most business meetings, more business meetings than all of us, maybe more than anyone ever. He was a lead producer for town halls and other high-profile events like the Larry Dahl Memorial Rededication or State of the County. Mark's knowledge and experience was second to none. He was a diligent, incredible, reliable, and by all accounts, a great guy. Our condolences go to his surviving family, including his son Dylan. He will be missed by staff, producers, and all involved in our production process. With that, we'll adjourn today's meeting in Mark's name. We're adjourned.